Good morning. We will call the meeting to order for the Brookings County Commission for January 17th. Please rise for the pledge. Next on the agenda is an invitation for a citizen to schedule a time on the commission agenda for an item not listed. There are five minute time limit per person. Anyone wanting to speak during the agenda must sign in prior to start of the meeting. No commission action will be taken during the agenda item. Any requested action item will be scheduled for a future meeting. And we have nobody signed up today. Number four, approval of the agenda. Is there a motion to approve?
Move approval.
You got a second? Any changes or discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
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 Pose same sign. Motion carries. Consent agenda. Consent agenda consists of the approval of the minutes, approval of travel requests, approval of personnel action notices, approval of cellular authorizations, and approval of human services report. Is there a motion to approve?
Motion approved.
Second.
Second. Discussion on the consent. Hearing none, please call the roll.
Vanderwall?
Yes.
Bartley?
Aye.
Jensen?
Aye.
Hostler?
Aye.
Krogman?
Aye.
Motion carries.
All right. Number six, routine business, approval of claims. Is there a motion to approve?
Move approval. Second.
Second. Discussion on the claims. Hearing none, please call the roll.
Bartley?
Aye.
Jensen?
Aye.
Hostler?
Aye.
Vanderwall?
Aye.
Krogman?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Department head reports. Start with Brian.
We have twelve loads of salt on order. And this three-letter word, ice, goes through a lot of it. So we're sitting pretty good right now, but just forewarning, we're having trouble getting it. That's all I have to report.
All right. Questions for Brian? All right. Thanks, Brian. Marty?
Morning.
Morning.
For the patrol along with my guys, along with the troopers, I think there was, there's been seventeen cars that slid in the ditch in the last twenty-four hours. Only a couple this morning. So it's, DOT and that were out early getting, getting some sand, or getting stuff on the road. So it wasn't, wasn't too bad this morning. And the cars, when I was talking to my guys before I came over here, they said that traffic is really slowing down. See, so that's good. Because the majority, probably if not all of these that slid in the ditch, is probably overdriving road conditions in some way. So anyway, so we're trying to deal with that. Got thirty-four in jail right now. There is eight from other counties. I got four from Woody County, one from Lake. We took one from Minnehaha County, one from Turner County, and one from Clay County. Now Turner, Clay, I don't have contracts with, so there's just a, Clay County only has a seventy-two hour jail. And they got somebody sentenced there and everybody was full, so I took on Clay. Lake Kingsbury and Duell want contracts. They, all three sheriffs called me last week and I sent them contracts for that. Again, those are, it's like a hotel. It's whatever. I'm still, it's still a process for the US Marshal Service. So it's a lengthy process to get. They have to review our policies and they also have to do a site visit. And so I'm dealing with a lot with the US Marshals to get them, to get on board and stuff. On twenty-four seven, I have one hundred and fifteen participants. There's three on drug patch. There's thirty-one on PBTs that come in twice a day. I have ten on remote breath test. The remote breath test is a little gadget they carry with them and they take it, when they blow in it, takes their picture and so forth. I have seventeen on SCRAM, which is the ankle bracelet, twenty-four on UAs. Drug court, there's three. Hope court, there's seven. DOI court, there's eleven. And I have nine on GPS that we're tracking. And other than that, if you have some, have any questions?
Questions for Marty. All right.
Okay.
We're good. Thank you.
Thanks.
Bob?
Good morning. Come up here recently. We have a, later on in the agenda, we've got a request for disaster declaration from a storm earlier in December, which we'll talk about later. The PPCC slash pod tabletop exercise went well on Thursday. We had a good turnout. And I'll be doing an after-action report on that and get it to you guys as soon as it's done, hopefully for the next meeting. We will have a drainage meeting later today. I've got banners associated as long as the weather don't sock them in, they'll be up here. And that's just the start. After, after, it's a non-action meeting and then after that, we will schedule a public meeting and invite the public and review the report. And then we'll have to make a decision somewhere down the line. And last but not least, we got an email message from the dispatch center saying P-25 radios, all radios in Brookings County that hits the state radio network needs to be P-25 capable by November twenty-twenty-three. They will be shutting off none twenty, none P-25 radios. And in the emergency management, I've only got two radios left and they're rather small radios and the EOC trailer itself. So we're going to take a look at that. And it's not going to affect regular analog radio, radios that someone may have. This is strictly the, but of course, like the sheriff's department uses the state radio because it gets better coverage. So just to be aware of that. There is a pipeline training session coming up later in February twenty-first. I will not be attending that particular meeting. I've got a Rotary Club meeting at the exact same time. But my staff will be there and I believe all the county commissioners have received an invite. If you haven't gotten an invite, we'll get you one. And that's all I have right now. We got other stuff on the agenda. Oh, and we got our end-of-year report. I almost forgot about that. As you can see there, we, we held twelve scheduled meetings, four special meetings. Some of them was joint meetings, work sessions jointly with the city planning commission. We gave sixteen conditional uses. We had sixteen conditional use applications. Two people withdrew. We had twenty-two variance requests. And it's like all twenty-two was granted. The ordinance update, we did amend our regular county zoning ordinance to a certain extent. Then of course, we passed the joint jurisdiction ordinance. We are going to tackle this year, go back and look at the zoning ordinance for Brookings County and try to get that all updated to the modern style. We approved thirty-five plats at our level, which was in, of course, since your level. Two rezonings were conducted, both in the joint jurisdiction area. We had no appeals at this time. One of our zoning board seats was not filled until September twenty-twenty-two. Our building permits of one hundred and forty-three, you can look on page three, it talks about the historical data. The one twenty-three, or one forty-three is twenty more building permits than what we gave in twenty-twenty-one. So we'll catch them back up. And total, with the Doracho, the county commissioner passed, or allowed us to waive building permit fees. And we, it's like we waived five thousand two hundred and thirteen dollars and three thousand eight hundred dollars in inspection fees. And there's a breakdown there on the permits. Any questions? And then on the back, back pages. That's what we did on emergency management. We certified our storm ready. Any questions?
Bob, what was the timeline unforgiving for the building permits again? Was that till the end?
It was eighteen months.
Okay.
I can verify that for you. We didn't, we, you know, we looked at you couldn't do a month or two month. You had to, had to give them a time period.
I know there's still struggles getting contractors and materials and stuff, so just wondering.
Yes. And we'll work with them up until a certain point. Obviously, three, four years down the line, we may.
Right.
But if we get a, it's usually case by case, especially when, when working with farmers. Thank you.
Dustin?
Good morning.
Morning.
Morning. With some yearly attendance and events that we've done over the last couple of years. Lisa took all the data that we've been taking and put it into some graphs. And I presented that to you guys. Do you guys have any questions on any of that? We're up in the gun range from twenty-twenty-one to twenty-twenty-two. We're up in about three hundred, but we were down about a hundred. For the new commissioners, the attendance that I'm giving you is just during our public hours. It's not all the events that we do, like JOAD, that's not included, 4H, that's not included. I just count that as an event. The events that we've had, we've done five hundred and twenty-two events. That's from a 4H meeting all the way up to a charged event. That's up. From twenty-twenty-one, we had four hundred and thirteen. The graph that's up on the screen is all the charged events that we've done. And that's reoccurring. People that use the building every week or every month. Any questions on any of those at all? We've also broke it out into paid and unpaid, unpaid 4H county. GFMP is in there, but technically they pay a thousand dollars every month for the two office spaces. But we let them use the classroom if they have a meeting or, right now, we have two interns hired that they do some programming to try to get more people back in the outdoors, hunting, fishing. And they're all, we applied for a grant last year and received that to hopefully offset some of the costs we have every month. This year, unfortunately, we had to, our, in December, we had to close the building down a couple of times. I don't like to do that usually because when the weather's bad, people come in to shoot and it's a good night for us. But with no travel advised, we, our volunteers average ages sixty-five, so we decided to close the building to the public. We are still there working, but closed it to normal shooting hours and stuff like that. I'll probably talk to the board on when it's okay to close and that type of thing, or if I should check with my liaison or not. But then we, I keep track of year-to-date building maintenance, what we've done, what we had to do to the building, that kind of stuff. That's in your report as well. Maintenance, just for kind of twenty-twenty-three, we had all our fire extinguishers recharged, checked, so they're good for another year. Train is our HVAC company. We have another year on a service contract with them. They do our electronic filters for the gun range and do all the PMs on our HVAC units. I need to start working with our rep on that to see about extending that prices. I know stuff's increased quite a bit. But we have one year left on that. Last year, we had a broken pipe right away at the beginning of the year. This year, we got a broken window and a bad ignition module in our makeup air unit for the gun range, so hopefully get rid of the bad right away and hopefully we'll be smooth sailing the rest of the year. Twenty-twenty-three budgeted is a new scrubber, server, sidewalk for the exit door in the gun range, a ceiling in our little utility closet. And then just do some little touch-up painting around the building and maybe update that classroom. I'll present all that to you with numbers and stuff. And then our berm, we're going to try to get that cleaned this year. We got that cleaned December of twenty-twenty. And then our dynamic filters again in June. And hopefully, I got to get moving on that because we got to have that done by June thirtieth to get that money for our grant. I also presented the bylaws. If you guys wanted to read through those, mission statement, kind of what we're about. Currently, we have three part-time employees, one full-time, and myself, and about fifteen volunteers. That's not including any of the 4H volunteers. I think Sonia's got, oh, I don't even know, probably close to a hundred. Twenty-twenty-three events, JOAD, which is our Junior Olympic Archery Development, for those of you who don't know. It's kind of a club that uses the building. We've been working with them to grow archery. It's been a pretty good relationship. They actually have an archery shoot for March eighteenth and nineteenth. Running's got involved. They sponsor it. They actually pay full facility rent and they do a pretty good job with them. Gun League has started. 4H Shooting Sports is underway, so it's seven days a week. It's pretty busy in the facility. It's nice to see. And then Arrow Mates, they fly little model airplanes in our archery range on Monday nights. And then Midwest Maidens, a roller derby group, they're planning some dates for twenty-twenty-three. And the interns and I sat down and planned about four or five events for the rest of the year, so hopefully we can get those out and advertise to the public pretty soon. But that is all I had, unless you guys have any questions.
Any questions for Dustin? All right. Thank you.
Thanks.
All right. Finance officers report. Lori is not feeling well today, so she wasn't able to make it. But we have some be-it-noted items. The auditor's account with the treasurer, the payroll and additive totals, the highway expenditure report, register of deed statement of fees and collect. Also, letter D on routine business is also some wage listing, employee wages. We have volunteer list, which is BCOAC, range safety officers, archery range volunteers, and pistol range committee. We have a list of storm spotters. And we also have pandemic planning, coordination, and points of dispensing committee. So those are all be-it-noted items to be into the minutes. All right.
Just, can I elaborate on that a little bit? So the wage listing, we have to do, that's by statute. We have to list everyone's wages at the beginning of each year. And then the volunteer listing, we put those names and we actually list them off in the minutes so that they're covered under the county for work comp purposes. If they were volunteering for the county and something happened, we have to have them listed in the minutes for them to be covered for, with, under counties, the county's work comp. So that's why we do that every year.
All right. Any questions on that? All right. We'll move on to number eight, regular business. Letter A, action to approve resolution twenty-three dash zero four, resolution for declaration of emergency slash disaster. Is there a motion to approve?
Move approval. Second.
Second. Discussion. Mr. Hill?
Good morning. Yes, sir. The Department of Public Safety for South Dakota, Office of Emergency Management contacted my office. The, the storm system that came through December twelfth through sixteen didn't necessarily affect Brookings. The city of Brookings itself hired, but it did hit our northern part of the county and it produced one hundred and forty-four thousand dollars of a damage to HD electric poles. And Sioux Valley Energy had forty-four thousand nine hundred and seventy-five dollars worth of damage to electrical poles and electrical lines. Our Brookings County threshold, we have to meet a threshold of one hundred and fifty-two thousand six hundred and twenty-five dollars for us to declare a declaration. And right now, we're setting, setting over one hundred and eighty-eight thousand, close to one hundred and eighty-nine thousand. So the state of South Dakota requested that we take a look at the declaration of emergency disaster so that the rural electrics can at least apply for federal funding to help replace the infrastructure that was damaged. We, we checked locally with our, our county offices and right now, we don't have any money to add to it. And you know, our, our snow removal, basically, it's, it's covered under regular, regular time. And the sheriff's office, they're on twenty-four hours a day, so we don't have, at this time, Brookings County itself wouldn't add anything to it. But we got plenty of money being, being claimed by the rural electrics to qualify.
All right.
And I recommend we approve it.
Okay. Discussion. Hearing none, please call the roll.
Jensen?
Aye.
Hostler?
Aye.
Vanderwall?
Yes.
Bartley?
Aye.
Krogman?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Letter B, action to approve resolution twenty-three dash zero five, a resolution setting the weight limit enforcements. Is there a motion, on Brookings County highways, excuse me. Is there a motion to approve?
Motion approved.
Second. Second. Discussion. Brian, comments?
No changes from last year.
Any further discussion? Hearing none, please call the roll.
Hostler?
Aye.
Vanderwall?
Aye.
Bartley?
Aye.
Jensen?
Aye.
Krogman?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Letter C, action to automatically supplement for unanticipated expenses incurred and reimbursement made to Brookings County for reimbursement from Drug Control Fund for equipment, Sheriff's Department GL line one zero zero one dash four dash two one one dash four two nine zero. Receipt number zero zero six two three four zero four in the amount of four thousand five hundred and thirty-nine dollars. Is there a motion to approve?
Motion approved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Discussion, comments? Buddy?
This is just grant dollars that were received that Marty would like supplemented back into his budget.
All right. Sounds good. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign. Motion carries. Letter D, discussion to action to approve a request to fill vacancy for an office manager in the highway department. Is there a motion to approve?
Move approval. Second.
Discussion. Comments?
So Linda Gross, who has been with the highway department for quite a few years, has announced that she's going to be retiring in June. And so what we would like to do is start getting the process ready to hire a new office manager for the highway department. We would like to have some cross-training, some overlap in that position, so the new individual can work with Linda. And we're thinking.
I'm thinking we'd like to try to get through two pay cycles is the goal.
So probably mid to late April, I'm thinking, is when we would like this person to start. So we want to be able to kind of start that recruitment process or have it approved, so when we, when it's time to post and go, we can, we can do that. And we can really start anytime and then just let that individual know that, what their start date is of mid-April, so.
Comments, discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign. Motion carries. Letter E, action to declare items of surplus property to be destroyed or transferred. Motion to approve, please.
Motion approved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Second, okay. Comments, discussion? Jenna?
Yes. In front of you is a list of items to declare a surplus property. As you can see, there's about four computers or monitors that we would like to just destroy. And there's three office chairs that we'll just destroy as well. And then there are several of the old pole pads, like the, the old laptops that Sean was able to wipe clean. And we were able to give to some of the various departments to be able to use. Four of them, we would like to transfer to the finance office. One of the laptops, we'd like to transfer to the equalization office. And then two laptops were given to the county jail to be used, so.
All right. Further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign. Motion carries. Letter F, action to appoint Benush Amande to the Human Rights Commission. Is there a motion to approve?
Don't move.
Second.
Second. Discussion.
We had actually appointed Deshaun Herman this past fall when the appointments were open. And they have since submitted their resignation, realized that they could not serve on this board. But then we did have this other individual, Benush Amande, did then apply. And so we are asking for the appointment of this individual. I believe it's a three-year term. The appointment will end at the end of twenty-twenty-five. This is actually a city, a Brookings City Board that the county does appoint one member to.
All right. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign. Motion carries. Okay. Jump up to the nine o'clock or do we want to do your commission director's report?
I think we could probably jump up. The nine o'clock isn't, isn't like a notice, public hearing, so, and I believe they are here, so.
That sounds good. We'll move on to our scheduled agenda item for nine o'clock, Brookings County Conservation District funding request. So gentlemen, if you guys would like to come up and, we'll, is there a motion to approve so we can start discussion?
Motion approved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Second, okay. John, introduce yourself and you got the mic.
Good morning.
Good morning.
John Halens, I'm a supervisor. District. And with me today, I've got Jerry Oinas, which is a supervisor, and Rick Kerr, which is our chairman of the, of our district. The one thing I do have, I don't think that we included in our letter previously, was the actual invoice for what the pickup that we were looking at. So we've got a number, exact number now. I do have copies of that, if you would like that. All right. We were trying, or in the location mode at the time when the letter was drafted earlier for you folks and, and didn't have an exact number, so I kind of ballparked the letter at that point. So actually came out pretty close to exactly where we were, so. Again, thank you for the consideration and the time that we had for the letter and the request from the Conservation District. The invoice, just to touch base on that a little bit, for the pickup, it's actually a twenty-twenty-three Chevy three-quarter ton pickup. There's no real bells and whistles to it. It's just a heavy-duty pickup. Just plain white in color, four-wheel drive, of course. And the invoice with the numbers that we have is fifty-four thousand seven hundred and fifteen dollars is the number on that item. To back up just a little bit, we did do our, you know, our, our goal is to stay local and. and, uh, you know, we did our due diligence there and looked at the, the local dealerships here in town. Um, they didn't have any vehicles that were of this nature, the, the state, uh, options that we have and the discounts that you get as a state vehicle. Um, none of, neither of the two dealerships were interested in that. We don't have a preference make, models, all those things, just that we knew we needed a heavier-duty pickup. And, uh, I think the, the, the information that we received from both dealerships is they didn't have anything like this available. They also didn't want to, they're on an allotment system, the way I understand it. So they only get so many vehicles allotted to them every month, year, and, uh, this pickup, where it's, where it's limited revenue generation for them, therefore they said, well, you know, we appreciate you contacting us, but hey, we're, we don't have something available. We could, we could, it'll count against our allotment. It's all right, we appreciate the consideration that the Conservation District gave to them, so. Um, with that, otherwise, we're not a fan of going outside the area or outside the state even to look at purchasing a pickup, but this is one that we found that was priced the least amount and would certainly serve the purpose for what we were looking for. Uh, next, just our overall request and, and you hopefully had a chance to read through the letter, um, that we presented and, uh, you know, I was indicating there it was a twenty-twenty-two Chevy pickup, it ended up being a twenty-three, it's a year newer. Um, kind of the long and short of our need out at the Conservation District is we've got a, a light-duty half-ton pickup, a two thousand eight that we've owned, uh, for a number of years. And, uh, just with transportation, getting these, uh, our supplies, the trees, the, you know, all the equipment and stuff that we have, that pickup is inadequate for pulling those trailers, we're, we're getting seed stock, trees, other shrubs, you know, they're, they're coming from more, they're up in northern Minnesota, up in North Dakota, they're coming from these other nurseries, so we've got a fair amount of hauling that we do with a vehicle. In the past, we've used an employee's, uh, vehicle and reimbursed them for that to get these, uh, get our supplies transported from the nurseries and the other seed stock companies. Um, let's see. The other, you know, the other need and purpose for it would just be getting our supplies from our district shop to the tree site and, and to the, uh, where we're performing our services, whether it's be the grass seedings or the tree planting, uh, areas, so. The, the two thousand eight pickup, we're, at this time, we're actually planning to retain that ownership of that pickup instead of trading it in. There's times, again, where our other staff member, the office manager, is traveling back and forth to the job site, taking trees, maybe it's running, uh, grass seeding or, or other seed that is being done and maybe it's running from the supplier to the shop, from the shop back out to the job site. I just think instead of utilizing another employee's vehicle, we could just utilize our own and being that one's paid for and doesn't have a large, uh, value either, maybe it's just as well to retain the ownership of that pickup. It seems to be in good shape, we've kept it in good shape, we've had some maintenance on it, but nothing, nothing real major. Uh, cash flow wise for the district, we seem to be with, again, your guys' annual assistance and stuff, we seem to be getting along just fine, uh, due to our, uh, employees and seasonal staff, they, they've got a lot of things going with the planting of trees, the grass seedings, the seed stock, uh, tree sales that we do to the general public and stuff, or, uh, the hand plants, I should refer to them as. And, uh, you know, those, those services just continue to grow every year, so we continue to do more and generate more and that allows us our cash flow to make things, make all our ends meet. Um, things that we're spending money on this year were repairs of our planting, tree planting equipment. We've had a lot of maintenance on those that just needed to be done for, uh, a number of years. We've had the time to get that done this, this, uh, winter so far, that's been underway. We've spent some dollars there. Um, we, uh, of course, as so many did, had damage to our shed earlier this year, the shop out there, uh, we had good insurance coverage there, we don't see any deficiencies in that process, we, our insurance policies and stuff should cover all of that repair, so we don't have any, uh, shortfalls there that we're anticipating. Um, one other piece of equipment we're looking at, uh, replacing is a, is a tiller that would, uh, till the strips where the trees are planted, where the fabric is put in and stuff, and that's a heavy-duty tiller that, uh, um, you know, there's a lot of debris that you run into out there that isn't visible ahead of time, so therefore demands the, the heavy-duty piece of equipment there that gets run behind the tractor, actually the tractor that you guys helped us purchase earlier this year, so. Um, with that, you had some information from me previously in the letter, maybe just open it up for questions from you folks.
Questions for John? I guess, funding wise, you know, coming up with the fifty-five, where would we, we approve this, where would we go with this, or where to come out of?
I believe the tractor came out of, was it Commission Projects, maybe? Or no, actually, the tractor came out of contingency last year, but I would, there's money left in that Commission Projects line, I would recommend using dollars there.
I would concur, that's where we're chipped up from, Commission Special Projects. Okay.
I guess I should probably continue for, you know, with the request, again, I kind of ballparked it at fifty-five, I wasn't sure where that was going to hit in. Um, if you, the, the invoice would be what we're requesting, you know, obviously that's the limit, anything that you see feasible would be greatly appreciated, so.
Well, if we could, uh, maybe amend the motion then to, uh, um, if we're going to approve, uh, the purchase with the attached receipt, um, coming from, uh, Commission Special Projects, that would probably be appropriate, so. You'd like to do that?
Move to amend.
Okay. Everybody okay with that, friendly amendment to itemize that? All right, any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign, motion carries. All right, thank you.
Thank you guys very much, appreciate it.
Just a quick question, when do they expect delivery of this truck? Do they have it in stock or this is why they're out?
This one is in stock down there, so, yep, we would make arrangements to travel down and, and either pick it up or get delivery up here, so.
They're, they're hard to find.
Almost like a needle in a haystack, the few that we had found earlier, uh, yeah, they were, we appeared that maybe they were available after you talked to a salesman, nope, they're gone, or, or, uh, it isn't even there yet, you know, they start advertising some of those before they get them on, on site, so, you bet. Thanks again.
Thank you. All right. We will continue on here, our next scheduled is ten o'clock, which we will probably hold tight to, um, because potentially public may want to be here for that one, um, so we'll move on to number nine, Commission Department Directors' report.
Report was part of my staff report, a veteran service officer, forty-five appointments. Um, due to weather and holidays, the DAV van rides and outreach events were canceled for December, so, um, down a little bit from, uh, previous months, but December's always, um, kind of busy with, with, uh, the holidays anyway. As far as the rest of my report, I did include the general fund surplus analysis information. Uh, year end twenty, uh, twenty-twenty-two, we did end the year at twenty-seven percent. We always like to be right around that, twenty-five percent is what we try to be at, so twenty-seven percent is, is very, very good. Um. We did get a quote from, if you recall, at the last meeting, we had the rural access infrastructure applications that we approved. Uh, Brookings Township, their estimate for their project, um, came in right away. We've been in contact with, uh, folks from Madera Township, but have not received that quote yet, correct, Brian? That has not come in yet. So if, I know, I, I think the board had said we would approve that based on getting an actual quote at the next meeting, this is the next meeting and we don't have that yet. Are you willing to kind of extend that out a little bit until we, I know they're working on it, is my, um, is my understanding, is that they're working on getting this quote, we just haven't gotten it yet. Are you okay with giving them some extra time to get that quote done? Okay. And then, um, as kind of follow-up from last year with the board appointments and as we were updating, updating that appointment list, the, the Railroad Authority, um, that membership, with, because we haven't met in a handful or more years, I think that group needs to just schedule an annual meeting, I think it needs to be done every year, just to establish membership on that Railroad Authority. And then you're familiar with who's on that in case something does come up throughout the year. In looking at that, that membership roster, it's been so long, the, the players have all changed based on who is probably at those last meetings. So if you want me to work on, um, trying to get a meeting called for that, I can do that. I think Kelly and Larry are on that. Okay. And then, um, the other thing that we, uh, don't have is a first district at-large member right now. Uh, I know Commissioner Vanderwall, he had actually filled that position as a, as an at-large member prior to being a county commissioner. I believe in the past, we have had two county commissioners, I believe, when, uh, former Commissioner Stephanie Miller was on there and then Commissioner Bartley was on there as well as the at-large member, if I recall correctly. So I don't know if that's something, I don't know if Kelly's interested, is still in that at-large position. Um, I just, kind of for, for discussion, I guess. We've been advertising it and have not received an application, and I think we've been advertising it since last fall.
Yeah, I apologize, I, I actually got ahold of Todd and asked him for sure, but I think back when I was on there, I was the, uh, the county's representative at-large. And then Steph was the commission member. And when she left, then I became the commission member, so it wasn't like we were, we overlapped for a short period of time, if I recall, but it wasn't very long. So, but I don't know the bylaws on it, I'm sorry. We could find out and we'll get a, a clarification on that.
Isn't one of zoning board member pointed and then the other one?
No.
No, no.
No, there's a commission appointee. And then there's an at-large, any, anyone in the county can apply.
I'll check with Todd, we, maybe we need to re-advertise.
And I think it is still being advertised right now, but I wanted, um, wanted to just get that on there, if you want to have that conversation with, with Todd Case and let me know. Okay.
Kelly, would you be okay if that was acceptable? Okay.
I am still working on the supplemental budget resolution, um, I hope to have that in front of you for the February seventh meeting. Um, still working on just kind of finalizing all of those, what's needed and then all of those numbers. Um, some good news that we received on Friday. Um, myself, IT Administrator Sean Plowman and Jail Administrator Dave Bytler made ourselves available for the committee that was approving the courthouse security grants. Met with them briefly at a Zoom meeting on Friday. Uh, they did follow up later after, on Friday afternoon, that we did receive the grant for the security upgrades at the courthouse. So I don't have an exact dollar figure, um, I know we submitted quotes, it was probably fairly close to that three hundred thousand, um, dollar mark, so I'll be kind of in touch with them. Um, of course, the county will still be responsible for ongoing maintenance items and whatnot, but to get the, the overall project funded, we did receive the grant, so. So that is good news.
Yes.
Um, I did hand out a couple of things today. The first thing was, uh, House Bill ten fifty. Um, this is, has been a similar bill that has been, um, in the legislature for the past few years. Um, a commission, county, Commissioner counterpart in Cottington County really does kind of the legwork on this, I'm, I'm maybe assuming that he's maybe done this again, but, um, this is implementing a county sales tax, but the sales tax could only be implemented if a county, um, issues a bond to do a major, um, construction, repair, renovation of courthouses, public safety centers or jails, um, and, and whatnot. So there's, uh, there's some pretty strict guidelines on when you can issue a county sales tax, you have to have this project in place, you have to bond for it. And then the other part of that is if you're going to issue the sales tax, it has to go before, um, a public vote as well. So there's, uh, a lot of kind of things leading up to the county issuing a county sales tax that's very specific for very specific projects and it has to go to a countywide vote. So that bill right now is being, um, it's in the, it's in the House, starting in the House. I think my cover sheet that I handed out this morning lists all of the House Taxation Committee members. Um, you know, this is something that was not available for us when we did our jail project. I know other counties are struggling to get bonds passed in other counties to do, um, jail projects or various projects, so this would be very helpful to those counties, um, and possibly for Brookings County in the future if that need ever arises, so wanted you to have that information. And then the last thing I have, uh, the other handout I had was the itinerary for Brookings SDSU Day at the Capitol tomorrow. Uh, I handed that out, buses are leaving from the Swift Hill Center at seven AM and they all expect you to be in blue. So, uh, but that's all listed there in that, uh, printout that I handed out this morning. Other than that, upcoming dates, again, Brookings Day is tomorrow, uh, the Naco Ledge Conference coming up in February, uh, county offices closed for President's Day on the twentieth of February, and then hopefully you all have on your calendar the township meeting on March second. Other than that, that's all I have unless you have any other questions for me.
The other thing I was going to add to the House bill that was actually brought up in our commission, uh, State Commissioner. And that's what I'll move forward.
All right, questions?
Stacy, circling back to that Railroad Authority deal, you and I briefly talked about that last week, is there a contact at the state that we have to deal with?
I don't believe so. I don't think so. I'll have to, I'll have to do some more looking into it to see if there is, but I don't think there's, um, to establish the board or to have that meeting, I don't think there's someone at the state. I think the contact with the state would come if there's a project that's presented to us and then they're going to ask us for our Railroad Authority to meet, to make a decision on projects that come up. But I don't think there's someone at the state level that would oversee our local Railroad Authority.
All right, I don't remember, was there, I mean, it was a long time since we met.
Yeah, I was on that board when we met.
Was there a chair and?
I think there was a spur that needed to be put on, you know, in Brookings County and that kind of thing, but otherwise, if really nothing changes with the railroad, we don't meet, so. But we do have some authority, obviously, if something changes on the railroad or some input, uh, with, if something would change or, uh, be added.
I think when these requests come, there's a, there's a state fund, right? There's funding from the state, I believe. Um, and then I think those requests for those funds, like, start with us and then have to go to the state level maybe. Um, it's been so long since we've had a meeting, I think we had, there was an additional, like, spur, uh, over at the soybean plant in, in Volga, I remember that, and then I think Novita over by Aurora, I think there was some meetings for that, but, um, it's probably been six, seven years probably since they've met, so.
So it's my understanding that most of the projects come from the railroad request, the projects? How about the projects that would be requested by, uh, the city of Brookings or the city of Volga for railroad crossing, security, uh, safety issues, is that even tied into this Railroad Authority?
No, I don't think so, I think these are specific requests for kind of like a, a fund that's held out at the state. And then requests for, for that state funding starts then with our local Railroad Authority.
I guess that's where it decided. When you said there were state funds available, I saw, all right, safety crossings.
Not safety, this is like addition, additions to rail lines, it's not for, my understanding is that it's not for safety mitigation issues.
All right, we'll move on. We'll move on. Next on the agenda is the State's Attorney's Office report. All right, we'll go on to Commissioner reports and discussion of items here. Commissioner VanderWaal, would you like to start?
Yes. Last week, I had a meeting with Stacy and she gave me a nice tour of the building here. And then on January 9th, I attended the Volga Fireman Annual Feed. I was good at crowd. Thank you.
All right, Commissioner Bartley.
All right, January 5th, we had what was supposed to be our last jail meeting with the construction company and the commissioning agent. And there were requests that we're not going, basically as an owner's rep, we're not ready to close it out until those things are completed. If you recall, especially for the new members, we independently hired a commissioning agency. Roger Thewey was the person that was in contact with that and put all the testing of all the systems in the jail. Air conditioning, HVAC, all the lights, electrical, security, everything else was, was tested by this commissioning agent. And it was worth our money, I'll tell you that, because he, he pointed out quite a few things that we probably wouldn't have caught on our own or through the general contract. So we will, some of the testing that has to be completed probably will not be completed until spring when we fire up the air conditioning again. At this point in time, there were some changes made to that system and we can't test it until they change over to the air conditioning in the spring. So we'll have one test at that particular time. If we require additional testing, there would be some fees attached to that that we would be beyond the scope of the original commissioning deal. So Henry Carlson is working with Roger on making sure we don't have to get into that out of the scope. So we'll, we'll put that testing off till spring. There were a few other things. There's some porcelain issues with some of the Kabi units in the jail cells that are flaking off some of the powder coating. We want to make sure that that's answered and issued and fixed, even if it has to go to stainless steel. We don't want flaking porcelain cells. The Kabi unit is the sink and the stool. If you remember in the jails, the one-piece unit. So we haven't got an answer back on that yet. So I'm not ready to close that out until we get that finished. So we will have another meeting, if not a couple, at some point in time. But we're really close. We've expended our funds up to this point. Additional funds would have to come out of our 2023 Building Projects Funds if we have additional expenses. At this point, we don't.
I think the only thing that's really left, we have some minimal dollars left to pay to Questions and Solutions Engineering, the, that's Roger Thewey, the commissioning group. Otherwise, the contract with BKV, the architect, and the contract for Henry Carlson, the construction manager are paid in full. So anticipating no further expenses from either of those. But there are, like I said, there's some things from the commissioning agent yet. And then need to figure out if there's still some like FFE type items as well. So we'll probably, you'll see a supplemental budget back for that 304 fund, the jail project fund, or some kind of just the, the last expenses overall for that project.
I'm going to guess, Marty, you're still here, are we happy? Yeah, that's your answer. Okay. I think it's, it's turned out well. I'm happy with the project. The, anytime you finish up these things at the end, it sometimes prolongs the final acceptance from the architect and the construction people that were happy. So we'll make sure we follow up on that and get it done. Thank you. And after that, I did go to the Fireman's Feed in Volga on the 9th. And then I'm going to head to the Brookings State Legislature tomorrow with the rest of y'all. That's my report.
All right. Mr. Jensen?
On the district meeting, one thing the Conservation District is looking for is like a basic first aid training. If the sheriffs or Bob, if there's some offered here in Brookings that they would be able to send a couple employees to, they would like to do that before their season starts. They haven't done it for a while and they thought it'd be good. And I told them I would relay the message if you hear of any first aid training that they could sign on and do with a group. They did appoint Jerry Oinas to a two-year term. His term was up and will be applied. So they appointed him for another two years. They were working on putting together requests to the commission. And that was that meeting. And on the 9th, I also attended the Volga Fireman's Feed and fundraiser. They had a fundraiser, they had 41 awesome prizes over there. I was not fortunate enough to win one of those, neither was Commissioner Bartley. But great turnout and good time. So that's all I have.
All right, Mr. Ossler.
Stacy and I met and she kind of gave me a tour and everything. Then Brookings Public Affairs Meeting went over Brookings Day at the Capitol and transportation kind of schedule there. And then on the 11th, had a domestic abuse shelter board meeting. Talked about the 2022 year-end financials and that. That's all I have to report.
All right, I had a light week. Just had the Brookings. We meet quarterly. Short meeting also. But one thing about it is our, our numbers are down for the amount of vouchers for Section 8 housing from last year. And we're hoping to, to get that, those numbers up and get more vouchers out. And so that was one of the things we looked at, year-end numbers. Financially, they're, they're doing fine, but they certainly have, there is more money there to be able to do Section 8. So working on maybe getting the, the word out a little bit more for opportunities for people to qualify for Section 8 housing. So, and that's all I have. So we could, we could probably go into executive session here.
Shortly before 10, yep, I think so.
So let's, I'd look for a motion here to enter into executive session in accordance with South Dakota Code of Law 1-25-2, number one, personnel.
So moved.
Second. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Close same sign, motion carries.
All right, I need a motion to come out of executive set. Second, second, for a discussion, hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Post same sign, motion carries. We are now convened as the Brookings County Commission. We have a ten o'clock agenda item, so we do need to adjourn as the Brookings County Commission and convene as the Brookings County Drainage Board, so I will adjourn us as a Brookings County Commission, and we will convene now as Brookings County Drainage Board. Next up on the agenda is a presentation of the summary report for the Big Sioux diversion structure study.
Good morning, commissioners. This is Becky Baker. She's Environmental Department Head for Banner's Associate. She's been the one spearheading our Big Sioux River diversion structure study this time around. This is like the third or fourth time we've taken a look at this, the structure, and she is here today to summarize the report for you and answer any questions that you may have. I'm gonna turn it over to her since she's the lead on it.
Good morning.
Morning.
I think, I believe you sort of have a copy of the report. I'm just gonna kinda walk through what we've done, and by all means, this is informal, so please stop me with any questions. We were hired as Banner Associates to take a look at this again, like we said, to really look at first the feasibility of possibly again within the location. I'll point it out on the map here, maybe have her go to page four of the report. Yep, you see the map up there on page four, it's figure one within your packets. Previously, when we began this study, we thought that there was a diversion structure located where you see the little tag there that says potential diversion structure. We believed that actually was, had failed, or was, had basically failed back in about 2010 was what we originally thought. Throughout the study, we got a lot more information from the landowners and found out it was actually more before 2002, but really, we were looking at what would happen to this area, what are some of the effects if we would put that diversion structure back in that place. So the feasibility study started with doing a hydrology model and looking at kind of the flows from the Big Sioux, and at the time, too, we kinda knew from East Dakota, they had done some flow monitoring, that if you look at the 2011 channel versus the Big Sioux River on this figure, that the flow had actually converted from the Big Sioux over to the 2011 channel to about seventy percent during some of the flows, and it takes a certain flow for that to happen. So basically, we were looking at if we put that diversion structure and put that flow back into the Big Sioux River, what would occur, and one of the main reasons for looking at this as well is there are a lot of NRCS wetland easements out in this location, and so with that, any effect to the wetlands within those would create a federal nexus, and so there would be a lot of additional environmental documentation needed. So we're looking at kind of those factors of what would occur to the farmland here, what would occur for the structures, for your bridge crossings, your culverts, and then also what would occur for those wetland areas. And so the feasibility study started with that, and then we also were speaking with NRCS as well at the time, and I can kinda go over, I guess, what NRCS had noted for their easements. Are there any questions, I guess, at this point? A lot of information up front. Okay, I'll go into the NRCS part next. So during the feasibility study, not only did we do the modeling, but we really took a deep dive in with NRCS on what would this mean, and so let me grab a figure of where the easements are located. There's one on figure three, page fourteen, PDF fourteen. And so basically, there are quite a few NRCS easements throughout this area. There is one located where the actual structure is proposed to be replaced, and that would, with NRCS's rules, require us to revoke that easement area, which is a pretty rare situation that has specific things that need to occur. Sorry, let me get you on that figure. It should be page fourteen on PDF for me. Yeah. Oh, mine's showing. Okay, hold on. It is a map. It's a figure three. Oh, I see. I see. Gotcha. Okay. Oh, there we go. There's the figure. Thank you. Sorry. So, yep, there you go. So you see there's the blue and the yellow outlines there in the easements. I was gonna look for the actual page number for you guys, but we got it. So basically, yeah, so within that location, the diversion structure would require a revoke of that easement area, and then in the other areas where you see some of the changes that would occur there from water levels, because remember, we're gonna take the water and place that back into the main flow of the Big Sioux, so some of those areas, the wetland areas would change. So the water would decrease where it is now, and those areas would change, so that would require a modification of those easement areas with NRCS. So both of those, a revoke and a modification, are very rare process to go through. Usually, when they put these easements into place, it's perpetual, and they, it's very rare to do that. So if we, we needed to do that, we'd have to go through an actual application package, and it would have specific requirements, and I can walk through those next here, but basically, it would then go to the national level with NRCS, and there would have to be a decision made on that. The pieces that would have to go into that packet include, we would need landowner responses for each of the landowners that have an easement present. We'd have to kinda know if they were approving of this or disapproving, and then we would also have to go through and do an environmental assessment, which would look at all the different components here, you know, endangered species, wetlands, permits required, so it'd be a pretty deep dive into those pieces. So at this point, once we got to the feasibility study, we also looked at just kind of a look over of how much water level changes would occur, and if you look at this map here, we started to show kind of the depth changes that we thought would happen. So if you're thinking of, right now, there is no diversion structure there, we looked at if it was placed back in that location, the coloring then is what would happen. So as you would, you know, logically think about, the orange and yellow areas there, the water would actually decrease by certain levels, and then in the green, you would see it increase, so the water flow would go back to. So this is what our hydrologic model showed. And it kinda gave us just an idea, initial one, to be able to talk to the landowners and to know how many acres of, you know, wetland and impact that there would be, and that's all reported within that feasibility memo. So as we move forward, we, you know, in the feasibility memo, then, we, we had a really good idea of what the NRCS was gonna require. We knew at that point what we thought some of the water level changes would occur. So next, we knew that the, the next hurdle would be really knowing what the landowners thought that had those easement areas. So we went forward with setting up landowner meetings, meeting with each of them that would, would come to the table and talk through. We had quite a few came in for meetings, and we report that within a table. Further down, maybe I'll have a scroll down, can tell you when we've gotten to there. There we go. That's the table. So within that table, each of the landowners, like I said, that had easements, we met with, if we could, and we gave them a packet of information, and then we got their response back on what they thought about basically putting in this diversion structure again. As you can see, there was kinda different ways to report it. There was in support, undecided, and not in support. And if you wouldn't mind scrolling up, sorry. Yeah, if you don't mind scrolling back up. Yeah, there we go. So there's kind of the, we had two that were undecided, two not in support, seven in support, and then we had six unresponsive. For the unresponses, we did call multiple times, offer them many different dates to be able to meet, and, and many responded that they were gonna be sending them in those forms, but we have not received those to date. And of note, the NRCS rules do note that you'd want all of the landowners to support this if you moved forward with that application, but in discussions with them, too, it would have to be a not in support that can be proven, that would be of a detriment to that landowner. It couldn't just be someone that says no without support of information. And we have not shown NRCS this information yet. We thought this would be the next step.
Quick question, if it's unresponsive, six landowners, which way does that flow?
I know.
You gotta have a response from them, and it has to be us, is what you're saying.
Yep, I would need a response from them if we continue forward. So NRCS didn't indicate either way of how they would consider it, and since they're the ones we're applying to, they would have the most say in that. I would assume you would still report them as unresponsive, but you're correct. If we move forward, we would need to track them down further and get those responses. And we did try, yeah. It's tough. But yeah, I would say, I mean, them unresponding, it could mean several things, right? Maybe they're concerned about their neighbors' responses, or maybe aren't, aren't willing to step forward and make that response, too. So it's something we could ask NRCS how they would consider it, too. One thing I wanna point out that was interesting in the landowner meetings, and maybe I'll have you scroll back up, I'm sorry. One thing that was interesting is we got a lot more information about the diversion structure, and originally, like I said, we thought that it, you know, blew out or was no longer there around like 2009, 2010. Well, we found out quite a bit more, if you don't mind scrolling all the way up, there's gonna be some aerial photos. And as we all know, landowners know a lot more about the area, so in those meetings, we really basically started to understand, back in the 1960s, actually, someone placed a berm structure from roadway to roadway in that area on both sides of the river. And so if you don't mind scrolling up, I think it should show up here. There we go. So if you look, and it's probably easier in your packets, but there's a series of aerials. Yep, there we go. Yeah, there's basically, someone created a informal dike system back in the 1960s, and actually created berms, and you'll see it from the aerial once the landowner pointed out, we could see that it was obviously there, and it's actually on both sides. So someone did a very efficient way of, of keeping that water in those overflows within that river system, basically by doing that. And we kinda tracked down the landowner's name from the past and got some good information from that, but here, we thought there was just a diversion structure, but there was actually a full dike system that's still out there today to an extent, but you can see the river has started to flow into that, and there's segments of it that are no longer there. So not only we talked about really a diversion structure, but there'd have to be a good look at that dike system. There is a residence that's right to the south there of one of the curves of the river, that we believe that dike used to also go, you know, go within that area, too, that probably has been now constructed over or flattened or graded. So really, there's a consideration of that, too, as we would need to move forward. If you go down to the next aerial. So we knew then at this point that there was a dike system, but then we also found out that that ditch, that diversion ditch, also is a vested drainage, right? And originally, when it was dug in, it was only about six feet wide, three feet deep, and it was really to go from this location down to the property south of there to water cattle. And in, you know, from basically when it was dug, which we believe was the 1990s, and if you scroll down, this is before it was dug, so you have that, remember, you have that dike system there, but nobody's dug in that ditch yet. There was, actually, you can see there's a natural release of the river. I would say maybe, maybe an old oxbow of it, we're not sure, but if you scroll down a little further, you'll see here, that's when, this is the first time it appears on aerial, but someone dug in that ditch, right there. Yep, and so, yep. And, yep, and that's when we think, too, that there used to be a dike system there, but now someone put in a diversion structure, which could been, you know, honestly, they, it looks through the years like they managed that very well, like they would leave, they would maybe have a hay bale there to open it up and then put it back in, and so someone was informally managing that, that ditch, and allowing water to go through at times and then not at other times. Well, then, there was a landowner change, there were things that occurred, flows increased, and so over the years that we've had more flooding, if you scroll down, it's now opened. it's now opened up completely. This is kind of when it was still being managed, but if you go one more down, you can tell it started to open up fully. And now we are having, basically, the flow from the Big Sioux is headed that way. There's still enough sediment there that there's a little bit of a, I guess I would equate it to like a bathtub, you know, a release valve. That's kind of what's happening is when there's certain flows. Because this year, when it was drier, the Big Sioux flows would stay within its channel. But as we start to see increase in flows, you'll hear from landowners more because that water now is going over that sediment deposit and is now taking that new Big Sioux river route. And there's also, you know, this location, but that if you go down and look at aerial, and maybe the next one has it. Yep, you'll see here, the channel is really widened now. I believe they're reporting it to be about twenty feet wide with about nine feet deep. So as you see, it just started to blow out and take that path the water has. So as I said, we started out thinking, you know, two thousand nine, two thousand ten, it was a diversion structure that blew out. But through, through this study and investigations, we found out that basically it was a dike system that also has this vested ditch and also a structure that was previously maintained that no longer is. So it's a little more complex than originally thought.
So does that, you said it has a vested drainage right, that, that, the new one?
Yes.
Okay.
There is, that right is still there. And actually, I think that's attached within your packet too, is one of the attachments. The landowner to the south of here is who has that. Is speaking with them, he was willing to give up that right. Informally, he said that. So there's a chance there that that could be resolved. But that is part of why whoever was maintaining that before, you know, and then a change in landowner, you know, they saw that drainage right, and so that's part of why they stopped maintaining that too, because they didn't want to stop the water from going down because of that right. So maybe we'll go to the end of the document. As you can see, this has been a complex study and really a situation trying to figure out what are your next options moving forward. And so I'll talk through those. And I should say, yeah, in the attachments, you will see that vested drainage right. You'll also see each landowner's handwritten responses to give you a little more information. And so we were really looking at this as two different options, and I can tell you which page two. There we go. Thank you. Yeah. We'll just walk through this next part if you guys are up for it. The, the option one is to choose a no action. And forgive me, I'm talking in environmental document language here to kind of line us up for if we proceeded with NRCS. But no action means that you would not move forward with looking at the diversion structure. And that would mean, basically, the next steps would be, we complete the coordination with NRCS, kind of do a loop back. And then certainly, you know, not required, but of course needed, is to loop back with the public too and to talk with the landowners. And really, the, the point two, I know that this project has a, a long history, but we want to make sure that we have a good document such as this, that if future questions come up on this too, that this could be provided to landowners to understand kind of why, you know, that a no action was picked. And so if you chose no action, if you want to scroll down, we looked at what would be some of the things that would come up. One of the things and the reasons that we kind of went down this road is the roadway crossings, you know, your bridges, your culverts. I had our engineer take a good look at what are some of the cost ranges that that would be? Because if you think about it, your Big Sioux River crossings, of course, are sized correctly for that flow, but the path on that twenty eleven channel that we're calling it are not. And so you would see an upgrade if needed for your infrastructure. And so the price range there, of course, was calculated. And again, it's tough to put cost estimates right now to things, but we tried the best that we could to give you guys a good idea to make a decision. But there are three of them that would need to have a good look at upgrades. We also looked at the affected farmland. That's the next one there. I will be very honest, that was very difficult. We did several different GIS models, ran different ways to look at that. And it was difficult because it's hard to see. That area, of course, is a little bit more of a lower land, probably was usually a pasture area. But we had difficulty with seeing how much water change would occur and how much they wouldn't be able to. We had several landowners, you know, say, I used to hay that and pasture it, no longer, am I able to? Some of them, of course, have put it into NRCS easements. So I ran several different numbers and couldn't come up with an actual value for that. But I think it's critical to note that, of course, there's gonna be an effect to farmland too that will continue. Your next option would be then to proceed with looking at this diversion structure. This would, the steps there are kind of laid out, so you guys know. You would initiate, again, we go back to NRCS and kind of talk through. And we have two contacts that have been really great about talking through with us what that would mean. And you would start to work through an environmental assessment process. Environmental assessments require kind of different steps. You would need a purpose, need agency coordination. So not only would we work with NRCS, but we'd be working with like US Fish and Wildlife Service and a lot of different folks. And then you'd identify the different alternatives. So we'd have to look at, you know, the diversion structure. But like I said, there's this dike system too, so that's where you would get a little more in-depth on some preliminary analysis to see what would happen. And with the residences there, there's two residences that are right, right there in that river corridor too. We'd have to really take a good look at what effect could happen to them. If we stabilize one area, a lot of the landowners pointed out and were concerned with, you know, can that river take another route and affect their residents? Which the Big Sioux absolutely is, you know, there, there could be that possibility. We'd have to take a good look at that. And with NEAs, you have to, you know, know what effects could happen from every action and, and be really honest and open about that. We'd look at that affected environment. And then basically, we put together an easement package that would go to NRCS. And they would need to, again, look at it locally, but go nationally with it too. Because what would happen is, we'd revoke that one easement, but we're gonna have to find replacement areas for that location. And then the modified easement areas, we'd have to take a good look at what effects might happen to those wetlands and then look at what the mitigation is for that. One thing of note with that is, a lot of those easements were signed in the nineteen nineties, so before that hydrologic shift. So whatever they identified for acres and each easement, we'd look at, you know, or is there actually gonna be less than that? So there's a chance, though, that that might be less than what we think at this point. And then you would want to go into a section four oh four permit too with the core. As part of the study, we talked with them quite a bit as well. And everything that we'd be doing for NRCS, we keep them looped in, really, down to the river component, and then also any impacts to wetlands. But again, we'd have to look at how much effect that would actually be. Because really, you had a structure there before, and now you don't, and then you would again. So it may just return it back to the way it was before. So there may be less mitigation required. It just would be a conversation, and we'd all have to work through it with them. And so basically, if you took that route, then you're, you're gonna be looking at the cost for that easement application and the environmental assessment as well as, I'll just scroll down a little bit. And there's a little more information there in EA, and I can sure talk through the EA process more if you guys have questions. And then you'd look at, of course, the reconstruction of the diversion structure. We did not include the dike system within that. That's something that would have to be looked at and discussed. And we'd have to look at too, like I said, a lot of landowners were concerned about, if you stabilize in one location, could it make it weak at another spot? So looking through that. And so.
Just the cost analysis, is that for the environmental assessment study, a hundred and twenty thousand?
That was actually for the diversion system. And then.
Do you have a cost for the environmental assessment estimate?
Yes. I think if we scroll down, it's in the summary. And this was for the wetland mitigation as well. But if you go to the very bottom, thank you, sorry. You can people scroll for me here. But if you scroll to the very end, there's a table that shows all of it. There you go. Yep, yep. Oh, I didn't include that piece, sorry. I think the EA was about two hundred and fifty thousand. But I was going a little bit, yeah, it's an S, that was with the application as well. I think we noted up above, but I can look. But yeah, I have a detailed breakout if you wanted that too. But this is kind of the overall with them added together. I had them broke out at one point, sorry, but I, I just put them together so you guys could see. But this kind of was just a cost difference. I'm just trying to think of ways that, questions I would have in you guys' seat, trying to give you the information to make a decision. But basically, yeah, overall, it'd be really looking at those two things, is do you put the diversion structure back in or not? And do you continue to pursue that? Are there any questions?
Open it up to questions, if anybody has any questions or comments. I don't think we have anything as an action item on the agenda, so more just discussion, questions on this and.
I mean, any option that we would choose, there's potential within that option that the project won't move forward. Correct?
Yep, that's a good point. Yes.
Option two is not a guaranteed to proceed till finish.
Correct. Yep, yep. It is an application. And so like we said, the NRCS piece is very rare to, you know, they, I can't remember what they said. I think they've, in the state, done maybe two approvals over the course of the years. So it's very rare for them to ever revoke or, or to modify the easement. I think the thing, when we were first talking to them, it was a pretty strong hesitation. I think they understood though, once we talked about the roadway crossings, why we were looking at this. But correct, yep, it is absolutely, same thing too. You could go through, not to be a worst case, but I'd want to know. But if you go through the EA and the application with NRCS, you also have to go through them with the core too. So we've got several agencies that we'd have to have clearances and permits in order to go through with, and so.
Just a question on the Sinai Road, and they're talking about raising the grades for the bridges? Is that what they were talking about? I mean, we, we extended one bridge with this project on Sinai already. So what, is that bridge over the diversion channel, or is that over the Sioux River?
That's over the Sioux River.
Yeah. Okay.
And so there's a bridge that is this further west that is not adequate, I guess, not proper length for the amount of water that it's going through. And so that would be something where cost-wise, replacement of that bridge to make it longer and, and also.
Is that bridge currently on any of our future plans?
I don't know. I don't think so, because I don't think it's deteriorated enough. But I, you know, I don't know. I don't, I'm not sure if it's on there. I don't think it is.
Subject to weight restrictions, though.
No, I don't think it is either.
There, there were just concerns on the, the abutments, not being able to handle the amount of water all the time.
There's a lot of water sitting up, up against the road now. So when it floods, it goes down the ditches and sits against the road, and it was washing away.
So in a, in a do nothing, we, we would have had to do this anyway, this bridge, because of that. Or the bridge would have failed eventually if the abutments were washed away, if we didn't change.
Sooner or later, eventually. I, I don't think it's something.
We're gonna have that expense on a no option, once it erodes, whatever timeframe that takes.
So if we have to replace it, we're gonna have to replace it with something larger.
Yep.
But that's not necessarily in the next three to four years. It could be ten to fifteen years.
Right. But you'll, you'll wind up extending it. The bridge will have to cross the whole flood plain, which now will be in that piece. Yep, so that'd be the difference.
Because the diversion channel's been there for quite a while, and it's widened, and it's probably gonna get wider, we assume. Is that what we're saying? If we don't do the diversion, it's gonna get wider?
Possible. I mean, I think that what you might see is if that sediment, this deposited there, if that starts to flush out, I, I could see this becoming more and more the channel. That's my opinion. Yeah.
The main channel. As you said, right now, seventy percent of the water's going that direction.
During certain flows, it is. Yep, yep. And so they're seeing that. It just depends, like if it's a drier, if it's below that, you know, I do think of it as a bathtub. You know, if it's below that, then it's flowing normal within the channel. But the minute it hits a certain, you know, height. The other thing too, is if you go south there, there is a property right to the south there that it empties into the tributary that goes to the Big Sioux. And that's part of what we're calling the twenty eleven. There's also sediment sitting there as well.
What if the sediment was removed?
That will cause the flow to be able to go uninhibited more.
Without building another diversion, basically, can you do that? Is that an application to, to anybody on the state level to, to remove the sediment and put the bathtub back where it was?
Mike, or Bob, can you talk more into the mic? I'm being told nobody can hear you.
I, I don't even know if they need a permit to do on their own property. Typically, if it's their own property, you're allowed to clear a ditch out.
So there wasn't any study done as far as trying to remove the sediment to restore the flow back to.
Oh, I'm sorry. The, the sediment's actually holding the flow more into the Big Sioux right now. So the sediment is actually at that connection, like here's the Big Sioux, and here's. So if they took out the sediment there, that's gonna actually make the Big Sioux go more into that new channel. And so that would be.
Opposite of what the whole study was.
Sediment was on the Sioux, Big Sioux side, not the diversion channel side.
Yeah, it's, I think it's some of what's left of that dike and that, what was the structure before. And so I should clarify that, sorry. Yeah. It's, so it's basically holding it. So this last year, we actually had a comment from someone that, you know, it's not taking the new channel anymore. I think it's okay. And it was just because the water was low enough that that sediment was, and it was just, the water was continuing within the river. And so, and you'll see that more and more. But, you know, if we get, it just all depends upon the year and the flow, you know. So if you get a high flow and that velocity starts to go in there, I mean, it's gonna, it's gonna move sediment, so.
More comments or anything? So, well, Becky, thank you very much. I don't know if you have any other comments or finishing up points or anything, or.
I don't think so, but yeah, if you guys have any questions, please reach out. I know this one's a little bit more complicated too, so, and everything within the packet too hopefully helps. But yeah, any questions, I'm happy to answer or help.
And in the future, if, we will probably end up with a public meeting scheduled with the public and have Ms. Baker come back and give a presentation to that. And then if the commissioner's got any more questions, we, she'd be able to answer them then. And of course, if you got any questions that come up between now and then, just let me know, and we'll, we'll get them straight to her.
Okay.
So thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. We will adjourn as the Brookings County Drainage Board and reconvene as the Brookings County Commission. And we still have some more work to do in executive session. So I will, uh, we will go to executive session in accordance with South Dakota Code of Fair Law, one dash two five dash two, number one, personnel. Is there a motion to go into executive session?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Hold same sign, motion carries. And we have no further agenda items, so when we come back, we will.